Okay, perfect. So a call is being ordered. Thank you for coming. I would say ladies and gentlemen, but gentlemen, for the record, all councilmen are here. Mayor Anderson is absent, and I'll be filling in for him tonight. So will you all please rise and join me in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'd like to start this evening, Rick, by offering the council's condolences to you and your family.
Thank you very much.
You know, nobody knows what to say in times like these, but he was a great man, and we will miss him.
We will too.
Thank you very much.
On to the consent calendar. We have items A through C. If anybody sees anything on there they'd like pulled, go ahead and let me know. Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion to accept the consent calendar.
I move that we accept the consent calendar, items A through C.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilman Corningay, a second from Councilman Alvis, to approve the consent calendar items A through C. Is there any comment, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And passes unanimously. So this is the part where we have our public comment period. If you would like to make a public comment, it should be on something that's not on the agenda tonight. You may approach your podium, state your name and address, and give any testimony you like. Going once, going twice? You want this? Coming down.
Thank you.
So there's no public hearing tonight. I see no unfinished business. So on to new business, item five, Fire District Eight Agreement for Fire and Emergency Service and Joint Operation of Facilities. I assume that is... Oh, you're pointing at Aaron, Dean? He's pointing back, so I think it's you, Dean.
Thank you. Our contract is up at the end of the year with Fire District Eight, and basically this contract is just an extension. We did have, there are some changes in there, as you note, in the packet. We've upped the calls to $260 versus the $253, which it is currently. The thing that we've added onto that is that it'll change on the amount of hours. Right now, if we're out on a Fire District Eight call for five hours, it's the one set price. Now, after the two hours, it'll go up an additional hour per cost. Just to kind of recoup some stuff that we're paying out for our guys, so that we'll kind of recoup some of that cost back. The other thing is, is we opened it up for the part-time staffers. Since they pay 50% of our part-time staffers' salary, they're going, we're bumping them up to $15, and they'll be taking care of half of that. And we've also basically took down our, for lack of a better term, our boundaries between us. We can now respond to each other's calls, because right now, the Fire District Eight, at their stations, they, when they have a fire, like, we had a fire up there Friday night, or Saturday night, excuse me, and they had four people show up. So they're hurting for bodies. So we, basically, a lot of our people, it's okay to go before, you know, we wouldn't, after those hours, the hours of operation, we wouldn't go into their district because of insurance reasons. Now, we're just saying it's okay, we'll cover you for our firemen. If they're up there, go ahead and go to that, respond to that call. And the same with them, for them to, okay to respond to our calls. It gives them a chance to get a little bit of training. The other, the one other thing in the, in the contract, I do believe, if there's the... The clause, I think we can have it set up to where we'll look at the contract again in 2018 to make sure that we're being fair to both parties on the dollars and cents wise, and just renegotiate it without opening up the entire contract. Do you have any questions?
So are the changes in here something that is going to help us keep people longer? Do you think there's incentives in here?
For keeping volunteers?
Yeah.
That's kind of hard to say. I mean, the volunteers, they like going to the calls, but unfortunately, we train too well. They're just getting hired, is our problem. Or they're, the older guys are retiring out. So, but yeah, as far as the part-timers, it'll make this a lot more user-friendly and marketable on the part-timer side at the $15 an hour, because every other department now in the valley, except for Mount Vernon right now, is operating with part-time staff also, all the paid staff. So Burlington, Anacortes, District Six, they've all started hiring part-time people. So this will put us at the top of the pecking order for a little while.
Does this fall under the two reading rule?
You know, this is a contract that's been virtually unchanged, and is now 40 years in its existence. So it's, I think, about four changes, and it's already been approved by Fire District Eight commissioners. It's ready for signature whenever you're ready to approve it.
So it's ready to go.
So with that comment, Mayor Protem, right now, they can make a motion to approve the agreement with Skagit County Fire Protection District Eight for Fire and Emergency Medical Services and Joint Operation of Facilities.
Second.
I'll give that one to Corningay. So a motion has been made by Councilman Lemley, and seconded by Councilman Corningay, to approve the attached agreement with Skagit Fire Protection District Eight for Fire and Emergency Medical Services and Joint Operations of Facilities. Is there any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And it passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thanks, Shee. Next item of new business, I believe this is a second reading, or maybe more, the Memorial Park Caretaker Position Proposal.
The many-year in process.
Many-year process, okay.
Because I asked Nathan to come tonight to talk to you, and also the chief's prepared to talk to you about the issues at the park. A question was raised last meeting about what exactly are the issues at Memorial Park. So I thought we'd begin with, Nathan has a few images to share. There should be probably bailiff. There'll be bailiff one. And so I thought maybe we'd start with Nathan walking through just a brief series of photos, and then the chief can walk through some of the issues they've faced. The librarian had a number of additional comments she'd like to share. But you can talk to her later regarding the concerns about how the park's affecting the vitality of the library, so.
Can you guys see that okay?
No.
No.
Probably need the light.
That's not the best picture.
Needs a light on.
You gotta wait for the sun to be on the other side. I know.
Poor us, Nathan.
At the last meeting, you guys had some, some questions as to, you know, why, why do we want to do this? So I wanted to illustrate for you guys, you know, through some pictures and some of the stuff we have to deal with. But this is just the type of malicious stuff that we deal with here. That, that's where they've gotten up on top of the shelter itself and just pulled roofing tiles off. There's a couple places down there where they've done it, and we patched them, and they get up and do it again. And so that's a brand-new door on the front of the shelter, but I think within two weeks, they had pelted it with so many rocks. You can see what it looks like there. Graffiti.
Are we able to dim the lights? I'm sorry. Are we able to dim the lights?
You know, you, you might want to just move back one chair and use the high-screen TV there, because it's quite a bit clearer than the...
I'm sorry.
You don't want to read what that graffiti says, anyway. It's pretty bad. But, you know, graffiti's been a constant problem. I didn't, I couldn't come up with any pictures of the big stuff we've had, but there's been some pretty, pretty bad stuff. But this, that's on the barbecue pit there, same as that one.
That's on there right now, Steve.
Yeah, I need to, some of this we need to clean up. But that wall right there's been tagged so many times that it's got a stain on it where you just, the whole thing just needed to repaint, or we've washed it so many times, the paint is actually coming off. We had new gutters put on the community center, I think in about 2008, and what they're doing is they get on top of the garbage dumpster, jump to the barbecue, and then they jump on top of the community center, and they've, they've pretty much ruined the gutters in several places, and also just by jumping up and hanging on them.
We tried taking the dumpster out, actually, to solve that problem, and it caused a lot of grief for joys and for our other users of the community center, because we wanted to co-locate it with a locked-up, chained-up, immobilized dumpster, and it just wasn't working for the user group. So we put it back.
Yeah, so more graffiti on one of the doors. Downspouts coming down the community center. They're kind of smashed flat up against the side of the building, pretty much all the way around the building. That's the new bathroom door, where we've painted and painted so many times, but you can see the footprints on it where they kicked it and...
And remember, these bathrooms are actually locked now 24/7. So they burned down the last set of bathrooms. They tried to burn this one down.
It was, it was open one week when they first tried to burn it down.
Twice?
Two different times, yeah.
Yeah, so they tried to burn the new one down twice, and so it's just locked 24/7. So if you do happen to see a, you know, a mom with kids there, they just have to squat in the grass.
We had a porta potty there, too, but they also set that on fire, and it burned down. So there's nothing left but a pile of melted plastic.
Now, the porta potty company didn't charge us for that, you know. I was impressed. I figured we'd get a bill, you know, for their returning just the plastic puck.
Probably felt sorry for us.
This is one of the log pillars on the new bathroom. We put a lot of time when we built. We built, this is one of the projects that we built in-house, and we put a lot of time and effort into building it, making it nice, and they've just carved it and just, just destroying it. This is the Spanish-American Royal Memorial that's been there since, I think, the '40s, and it was never tagged up until about five, six years ago. And you can see the back. We've had to basically paint over everything.
And you also see the stumps. We've been gradually removing all of the landscaping in this park to open up sightlines, and there'll be about another dozen bushes and small trees removed this week. And then the guild, the police guild's having a work party there Saturday. They're coming in off-duty. They're going to lim up trees, clean up SIG butts, and try to get in there and just give the park a one-shot cleanup.
And those trees were removed for a specific incident, weren't they?
Well, there were some prophylactics found in that vicinity, and, you know, people hide there. And that, that just becomes the problem, is you want to patrol this park, and people are hiding or living in the bushes.
And that's why all the, in front of the community center where that empty lawn is now, they're the same, same activity.
Same issue there, yeah. So we're going to get rid of most of what's around the senior center next, and Ellen's going to take responsibility for doing the pretty, the cleanup of the prettier plants in the front. But around the side, we're just going to delete all those. So.
Sad.
Yeah, well, I mean, there's a reason why we want to put a caretaker in the park, lots of reasons. And it's, it's pretty frustrating for those of us who kind of walk through that on a regular basis, because it's so much potential. You know, I keep the plan of this park in my office from 1920 on my wall, and it was a neat park, you know. It had wading pools, horseshoe pits, tennis courts. I mean, it was, and we just have not done well keeping up on it.
This is right outside the south entrance to the community center, and right next to the no-smoking sign, you can see where they've, that's, those are plexiglass windows, and they've carved nasty stuff into them, and they actually have burned. That thing on the lower left there is where they've put a lighter up to it and tried burning through the window. Just more malicious stuff.
We did put in a pretty tricked-out security system in there. They stole all the cameras. So then Bill installed a wireless hi-def system, and the wireless didn't work. So we've struggled getting as many cameras on this site as we'd like.
How much do you think we've spent over the, in the last five years cleaning up and...
Do you want to count the insurance company's check?
Well, how much, but what's the, like, what's the total maintenance that we're spending in that park just to, to keep these people out, or to fix the, kind of, the problems?
I don't know. I think we settled on the bathroom for 30, 30?
Do you have any idea of who these perpetrators are?
State Street.
Tucker Wood.
Actually, I don't think it's State Street, and maybe Lynn would let Lynn jump in here. You know, I've spent a lot of time watching this park, and I've gone out with, with the chief, when he was a lieutenant. He and I would sit out there. He had his, his monocular set up so he could spy them from two blocks away, so he could catch them in the act. And, you know, it seems like this park brings in teens from other parts of the county even, who then try to draw the State Street kids in, you know. So it becomes a natural meeting place, and maybe it is proximity to State Street, but it's not the State Street community simply walking across the street like we once imagined. And there's definitely an element that is not from Seadrill Willie that's part of this, in my opinion. The other issue is, this park is open in so many ways that it becomes an easy pass-through route. So you can congregate and get there in so many directions. You can leave similarly in so many directions. And then the parking element is, is also present. So it's really easy to drive right up to the park, and you can have multiple cars, you can smoke, you can do hand-to-hand transactions. You know, it's all very convenient. So, and I don't know, Lynn, if you've got other observations on that.
I got a, I got a, several notes written up here. I can forward these to Aaron, and he can forward them onto the council as well, because I just kind of went through and laid out kind of the problems we've been having with the park, and just some ideas on who the perpetrators are, how this stacks up against other places in town, who all this affects, and so on. So I started off with, what exactly is the problem here at the park? And, you know, the problem is, it's a, you know, Aaron's probably put it the best. It just doesn't seem to be a very safe place to be. Not really dangerous, but nobody wants, nobody that we want to go use the park will go use the park, because they're perceiving it as not a safe place to go. You should be able to go to the park and let your kids run, you know, free and, and have fun. Well, I don't think anybody really feels that comfortable there. So that's the first one. This is a, just a decent little park. It's, it's just a nice area. It's adjacent to a lot of things. I know the birds go up to the library and stop in the park. I mean, you see a lot of folks doing that. Well, a lot of folks will go to the library and then avoid the park. And it looks, it looks bad now. It's just not very well taken care of anymore, because it's hard to devote any more time to it. Not a lot of real hardcore criminal behavior. We've had some fights there, some nuisance behavior. If you pull up the most recent crime map, it's exactly the same as the rest of the city. It's got the same essential percentage of problems. And what Aaron was saying before, the, the problem kids, what we've seen with, with the State Street High School kids, is they set up a picnic bench on the other side of the school. So that keeps those kids over there, and it actually attracts some of the undesirable characters who've moved into 830 Township, the apartments there. They come out to that same place when the kids leave. So it's kind of, you can kind of see where attractive nuisances can occur. I mean, one of the first things to go from that park were the picnic benches. You know, picnic benches were getting carved up. They were getting gang graffiti written on them. They were being destroyed. So those got taken out a long time ago. There's really nothing in there but play areas, the play area for the kids, and it's actually kind of nice. The kids that we see there now, we've hit them kind of hard with the smoking, so we don't see a lot of smoking out there now. But as Aaron was saying, there's a, there's a program out there called SEPTED. It's Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design. And Mount Vernon was doing this probably 15 years ago, and we never really jumped on it. But what we do is, we kind of do it naturally. And I'll kind of go through this, and it'll show some of the things that we can do that will help prevent some of this. But our problems there, too, are kind of cyclic. We'll get some kids that'll hang out there for a while. We turned off the Wi-Fi from the library, and it's almost like having a light on your porch. It attracts bugs. So the bugs were kids with cell phones, and they would go over and they, you can see them. They'll cluster around the library where they can get a Wi-Fi signal. And we shut that off, so we don't get as many of them after hours. I think there's a Wi-Fi signal that comes out of food moving, because I saw two or three of them sitting right outside the door, between the door and Burger King, all on their phones. So we get rid of some of those nuisances, or those attractants, and that kind of eliminates the problem. The majority of the kids aren't bad kids. They're just normal kids on the street, and if you go meet them, a lot of them are fine. There are some bad ones out there, though, and most of them are in the 20-some-year-old range. They're not the 14- or 15-year-old kids that we're envisioning as problem teens. They're 20-year-olds who are pretty much the same mindset of a 14- or 15-year-old. They don't have a job, they don't have a car, they don't have a place to live. They're just out doing things that, well, when I was their age, I was in the military. So they shouldn't be do, they shouldn't even be out there. They should be working or doing something else, but they're not. So what we'll see there, when we see why this is attracting attention, there's other places in town that are a lot worse. There's places where there's people dealing drugs. There's some abandoned houses that are attracting vagrants and people that are doing drugs and stealing stuff. I think that's a much bigger problem. What this is, though, this affects everybody that goes there. All the folks that come in and out of the senior center, feel uncomfortable going out of the senior center when these folks are there. We were at Rotary one day, and the gals from Joyce Bakery, Kim, came in and said, "There's some girl smoking weed in the barbecue pit." And we were, they were 10 feet away, watching the girls from Joyce Bakery as they were smoking marijuana in a pipe. And these are teenagers. So I went out and, no one would admit to who it was, but they're doing this right when there was 40 or 50 of us inside the building. So these aren't very smart people either.
You had another Rotary time where they were doing it at the front door to the community center.
Yeah, and they were right outside the door, and we were right inside.
Yeah.
So, yeah, right there.
And the smoke was coming in.
But, you know, this area here is noticed by, I mean, a lot of city employees that will pipe up and say something. A lot of the other problem areas in town that we address as, as we, as we get, I guess, either find them or get sent to them, they are usually only affecting one or two people around it, and it's, that's what's causing, you know, calls there. This is everybody, all of us that go to and from there, and look at the cameras, and Aaron goes down there, and we make it an issue. So it gets a fairly good reporting of problems. But library patrons are affected, users of the park, and really an image of the park. If anybody goes to our community center, which there are a lot of events there, they see a dumpy little park around it, and that's a really bad influence for us. There are some things that could be done to change this. Nathan's talking a little bit about kind of the potential caretaker. Well, if you note, we don't have any problems out here on Highway 20 in the new, or the renovated park out there. It's a beautiful little park. It attracts people. It's got nice, but we've got a caretaker out there. We have a few problems down at Riverfront, but those are because it gets reported by the caretaker, and he either addresses them or gets us down there to help address it. And the only places that are a real problem down there are the places that are really outside the scope of what a caretaker's dealing with, moreover on the boat ramp or on the bathrooms and all, that they can't be washed all the time. We've got good cameras watching this park, but like any other surveillance camera, they show a dark person doing something weird at night. And sometimes we can identify him, sometimes we can't. But I was talking before, the SEPTED program, if we do a little bit more study on that, we really already know what kind of things we need to do. The fence around the park along Highway 20, well, it's to keep the little kids out of the street, or off the highway. But if we had the same thing around this park, some sort of controlled access, that it would funnel the little hoodlums around to a different area, and they have to come in one area or climb the fence. And most of them aren't going to do that. They'll do it a time or two if they're trying to run from us, but otherwise, they're not going to climb the fence. And that chain-link fence out there on Highway 20 looks really nice, and I think you could do something similar to this if we decided to put the money into that park. Making sure we don't have anything that will attract the kids, the Wi-Fi access, keep that off, keep it well-lit, and not having the, the War Memorial out there. If you watch on a nice day, there's a bunch of good kids that'll sit out there on it and just sit on it. Well, five good kids can sit out there, and then all it takes is one bad one with a Sharpie out there writing stuff on it to trash it. So we need to maybe come up with a different idea for those flat spots where people can sit on that memorial. And then any, anything else, having good cameras, good access, keeping it clean. One of the things that Aaron mentioned before, Sergeant Harris, after a couple of council meetings and hearing the, hearing some concerns of the public, took it upon himself to get with the guild and suggest they do a park cleanup. And what that'll do is get some ownership for the officers that are going in there. And really, that will, whatever, you've spent the day cleaning up the park, and you go in there, and there's some kid throwing, you know, trash in there, it's going to piss you off. And somebody's going to get tuned up and boot it out of the park. And really, for the most part, most of the stuff that we deal with in there, that is our only tool, is we can trespass them from the park. Unless they're, you know, smoking, we can take action on that. But for, but that's a big enough thing, because then that gives us the ability to deal with them. Anytime they're near the park, we can go stop them, make them go away. They'll go somewhere else, but they're not hanging out in the park, which is really the essence of crime prevention, is pushing criminals somewhere else. I mean, we can't do much else with a lot of these. Another thing is, we still are lacking a place for some of these teens to hang out in town. And when I was dealing with, when I was down at the church downtown, or at the, the place downtown when it was open, there was 40 and 50 different kids coming through there. And a lot of them, when we were having this problem last year, were those kids that you'd see at the park, would be at the place, too, and got to know a lot of them. And when the officers were in there cleaning this place up, then they'll take more ownership on doing this. They'll start talking to these kids and spend a little more time with them rather than just booting them out of the park. And next thing you know, the kids are going to come at us and give us information, or just friendly talk. So it's going to be a plus-plus for everything, but it's really getting rid of the, the attractions there that will bring the wrong people there. They're not out there hanging out on the little kid toys and stuff like that. They'll hide in there every once in a while, and they'll do weird stuff in there. We can't stop, it's really almost impossible to stop intentional bad actions. If someone is wanting to do something bad, they're going to do it. We can discourage the casual stuff like the, the setting stuff on fire and, and doing stupid stuff like that. And honestly, a lot of what we do is probably not the best tool. The police officers often get handed a job of, "Go handle this problem." Well, sometimes that's like using a sledgehammer to, you know, unscrew a bolt, and it's not always the best tool. But getting more, different, different people involved and getting more activity of people who want to be involved in this, some of the church groups that like to deal with the kids. Steve Fish out here at the North Cascades Church out here on Highway 20, he's really involved with the kids. He's doing a lot of what the people at the place were doing. So there's lots of things we can do to improve this. It'll take some teamwork and, and some effort. But somebody actually watching the park and taking ownership of it and fixing problems as soon as they happen, that will be a big, a big fix.
Thanks, Shee. Nathan, did you have anything else? Were you done there?
Um, not really.
Because I don't think there was much pushback on the council. I'll speak for myself, but I think that this is correct. There wasn't pushback on the idea. We, we have the history of Bingham, we have the history of Riverfront, and we've seen that we reap benefits when there's somebody there. I think the council was concerned about you being overworked and whether we had the budget, and we could do it in the budget. I think that's the only things that we really need to know.
There was some talk of a, of a sketch of kind of what we had intended to do.
Right.
Sure, most of you guys have been in the building. The foundation's there, it's good. The roof is good. So really, the only thing we're talking about doing here is putting up some interior walls, a little two-bedroom thing, and the rest of it's pretty much a studio, just wall off, a little bathroom, and a, two bedrooms and a couple closets. So, you know, and we have done projects of, you know, about this scale in-house. And as far as the workload goes, you know, some stuff will get let go during the winter months when it's cold, you know. We're in here doing painting touch-ups. You know, we've got a job for the chief, actually. We're going to be ripping out a wall to make a new detective office, things like that. I mean, they're, they're still going to get done. They might just get kicked down, down the road, you know, a couple extra months. So we're, we're still going to get the work done. But I'm confident we can do it. But I'm confident we can do it. So, things like painting picnic tables and stuff, I'll just lean on the Oogies crew to help us out a little bit more.
We might catch a few people from the Oogies crew.
As far as workload, you know, it's totally doable. And I think that by having this position and this person here, you've got to get the right person to do it. We've had really good luck with Phil and Kim at the other locations, but, you know, it's going to pay dividends in our time of having to deal with all these little issues. The time's going to come back to us, I guess, is what I'm trying to say, so.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Mr. Mayor Protem. My concern was getting everything down on paper so that we could see, I wanted to see a sketch, I also wanted to see the breakdown of all the costs, so I could see how much it's, where we're at. And I see that you've gone to the extent of taking it right down to the dollar amount. The other part that I was excited about was that we're able to fund this within our budget and we don't have to look somewhere else for the money. So, with all that, I would like to make a motion, Mr. Mayor Protem, to accept the Memorial Park caretaker position proposal.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Galvez, second by Councilman Corningay, to accept the Memorial Park caretaker position proposal. Does that require any modification to our budget, or is it implied in the motion?
Is that within department?
Well, yeah, I'm not sure if it's within the finance director's authority or if it'll be a budget amendment, but what we were looking for at the last meeting was really authorization to proceed, and if we do need to make a modification of the budget, that'll be part of a regular amendment brought to you in the future.
Okay. Any discussion?
Appreciate you taking the time to put this together on paper, Nathan.
But you shouldn't have to make an amendment, I wouldn't think. You have, it says that you have the money available through the two projects that we're not doing.
Yeah, but we're not going to do those and do this instead, so I, we'll just, it won't, it won't increase the budget.
Okay, that's my question.
It's just a matter of moving the dollars within the budget.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
No, a big need.
I wanted to second what she said, that thank you for doing all that. Obviously, it's something that is, we just can't keep putting off.
No, I do something about it.
Patsy, if you'll keep it short, I'll allow your comments.
Yes, please. Remember, keep it short, though, because it's out of order, but I'll allow.
I want to say thank you for, Patsy Burke, B-U-R-K-E, L-O-B-A-T, 286 Claret Street in Cedar Willey, 98284. I want to say thank you for approving that thing about the park.
We're not there yet.
Because I love our little town, and I had some ideas, and I'll write them, and I'll write them up on paper, and I'll give a copy to Chief Tucker and the other people here, because he hits it right on the nail. And also, I personally don't have any stick in it, but I have some, I'm just going to say this, and I'm not mentioning names. I understand when you're ready to have it finished, you know, there'd be some kind of application process for people to apply to be the caretakers. And I'd like to have that sent out to a married couple, friends of mine. The husband, he worked 18 years as a maintenance city caretaker guy for the City of Concrete, and he's, and he works at Jan, he's a very good, educated man, he's about 50 years old, and his wife, also very well-educated, and they have no little children, and they don't have 15 dogs, and so they're very good, conscientious people, and I know they would do a great job. And she's home all the time, and that would help too. So, when you're ready to have applications for however that works out, they would be very interested, because like I said, he has 18 years' experience as a park and recreation or maintenance man. So, it might come to this, your meeting, and thank you for letting me. One last thing, I just want to say, again, thank you to our police department, our fire department, and the people that run the little program here, that, thank you for all your good work, so, thank you.
Thank you, Patsy. So, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Okay, we're down to committee reports. Chief?
Just a heads up, we took possession, jurisdiction over the Northern State grounds. We'd already gone up and done some footwork with the entities up there, letting them know that there'll be different police responses there. Went up there again on Monday, just to check in with a couple of the folks we hadn't talked to yet, the North Sound folks, which is a mental health facility, kind of a lockdown mental health facility, and then are working on a plan to put on a tabletop active shooter training with Job Corps. It's a requirement for them, and it's a necessity for us. So, we're going to start out with a tabletop and use that same template to do tabletop exercises with the high school and the middle school for active shooter. We've got a couple officers that are trained in active shooter response. And that's just some real good interactions with the folks up there. We've already handled a few calls up there already, starting at midnight on Friday night was when it was over. Our first two of our brand-new trainees, Zach and Austin, are going to be done with their training in two or three weeks, and they'll be turned loose on the public. And Katie's about a month, a month and a half, right out of that. And then, as we mentioned before, this weekend, Jason Harris has got some of the crew going to be out at Memorial Park doing just a general cleanup and straightening up and evening up things. And finally, one of the things, another thing that Sergeant Harris has done, kind of, Aaron's asked for a little more emphasis on the things that have been going out in the flyers, the parking on sidewalks, and just the little nuisance-type things that we're seeing. When Jason's got a couple of extra bodies on at night that he can spare, he'll send one of them out to just prowl around and look for those code violations and put some courtesy notices on there. He got a couple good ones this last, this last weekend. Yeah, it wasn't Dean, but we got a couple of them. And I think this is going to be the way, the best way of dealing with this, is some of those nuisance, the people parking on sidewalks, as we've got an extra body getting out there and hitting it hard for a couple hours. That's all I have.
Thank you. Other chief?
I'm sure.
John?
The draft environmental impact statement was released on September 18th, that was last Friday, so that's up for public comment until November 2nd. Along with that, there'll be a hearing at 4:00 on September 29th, right here, on the draft environmental impact statement, to get verbal comments and get a little presentation that day. The planning commission will be reviewing the subarea plan for Northern State, or the North Cascades Gateway Center, or the Center is beginning to collect several different names for the project. The planning commission will be reviewing that, I believe, on October 20th, with the presentation from Mal Foster Longi. The subarea plan kind of goes hand-in-hand with the environmental impact statement explaining the city's long-term goals. It'd be for the project, for that property, what it'll look like, how it might develop. The subarea plan is the, it'll be part of our city comprehensive plan, so it's more of goals and policies for the area rather than specific detailed code, like zoning, like, something like that. That'll be, any detailed information will be part of the planned action ordinance, and I don't have the timeline on that, we'll be working on that in the future, coming up shortly as well. The, related to the Northern State project, last Wednesday, the SCOG Steering Committee had a, had a meeting to review and make recommendations on each of the jurisdictions' requested docket items for the 2016, or 2015, sorry, Skagit County Comprehensive Plan Update Process. So, what that is, is all of the jurisdictions going through the process of finding out whether or not they can actually accommodate the projected growth based on the population projections and employment projections that were developed last year. What we did is, as the City of Cedar Willey has requested an additional, and we were granted an additional 2,885 jobs to be included in our 20-year employment projection. That is to accommodate the 2,885 jobs that are being studied under the environmental impact statement at the high end of the potential development at Northern State. So, SCOG allotted the city an additional employment projection that allows us to go forward, to have Northern State and still accommodate growth within our existing city Not all issues that went to SCOG went through as smoothly as ours, so we're very grateful. And we think that we did a lot of good work hiring, getting our buildable lands analysis done, and some additional analysis through HD Hove, GE Hove Company. And so, the planning commission will be continuing to work on the urban growth area expansion and zoning changes over the next several months. They've held two public workshops, sort of open house-type events already, and again, on October 20th, we plan on moving forward with some more specific recommendations for land that might be included in the urban growth area, or, and possibly getting to the zoning aspect of if we do add additional land, where zoning going to be, and then if that's going to require shifting zoning in the existing city limits, that's all going to be discussed. So, it's a lot of, lot of work. Again, this is what I've discussed with the council earlier, some people's property is very likely to change zoning, and that doesn't always make people happy, so, just again, heads up on that. The Building Department's been very busy. Still have out, we extended the timeframe for accepting applications for our Plans Examiner, combined Plans Examiner Building Inspector Position, but we will be talking to people Don't want to get into the details on that. There's been a huge wave of building inspections this month, which is sort of expected, seeing all the building permits that we've issued recently. And I think I'll leave it at that, if there's no other questions, yeah.
John, how does that number of jobs that we are granted compare with other cities?
Well, we're still a smaller jurisdiction. It's, it's, I want to say, it's going to be lower than other cities.
Ratio-wise, though? I mean, ratio-wise, are we at a higher ratio?
Ratio-wise, this is going to be a big jump, because we were allotted, not allotted, the original projection was somewhere in the neighborhood of 1,400, so to add an additional 2,885 is more than doubling that number, or tripling that number. So, it's quite a significant jump, and I have not compared it to other jurisdictions, I apologize. I can look into it.
That's okay. Just wondering if you.
John? Also, I thought, I heard an early number of 5,000 jobs at high build-out. Where did the 2,800 come from?
I'm not familiar with any numbers in the 5,000 range. The 2,885 jobs is based on the draft environmental impact statement. There's three, three studies that were done, three options. One is no action, one's a medium growth, and one's a high impact growth. This is the high-impact number. That's, I don't have all the numbers in front of me, but it would be assuming pretty much the maximum envisioned 20-year growth at the, in the facility. And I'm not entirely sure that at the end of the environmental impact statement review process, that we'll end up selecting that highest impact trajectory. But this gives us the ability to go there, should that be the alternative that is chosen.
Thanks. Mark?
The combined sewer and street project on Green Street is complete other than punch list. Turned out pretty well, the neighborhood seems to be pretty happy with the result. That was, again, a low-cost rebuild of the streets, the sidewalks, and the sewer, taking advantage of the fact we had to dig the street up for the sewer work anyway. So, we didn't put new curbs and cutters in there, we kind of modified the existing layout, and it turned out well. And the community approached us during the project to remove all of the old trees, which were pretty well overgrown in the Green Street median, and we've done that, they're going to plant back an appropriate street tree to replace those in the neighborhood themselves. Also, Nathan and his crew have completed some work on Heather Lane. We've had a longstanding problem with settlement of the sewer and the storm trenches in the middle of the road, causing ponding there, and they did a good job of laying that out and re-establishing the crown. That's our intention next year. We used up the rest of the money we had after the matchwork on the Green Street project for that particular project, plus some chip seals we did around town, south end mostly. We do plan on chip sealing the entire street next year, to make it all black, and I think it'll be a pretty good result when that's finished next year. So, other than that, we submitted all the TIP applications, as you know, back in August. We're waiting anxiously to see how that comes out, we'll know on November the 20th. And just busy with other things, budget and planning. We're getting ready to kick off our portion of the Transportation Comprehensive Plan Update. We're using the same consultant who did the work for the Northern States, the Center project, Victor Salem with TSI. So, looking forward to getting those numbers and getting that part of the plan updated. That's pretty much it.
Aaron?
Just a couple items. First, candidates forum, thanks to Councilman Corningay, pointed out that the school board positions are elected by the entire school board, school district community at the general election. I've added the two candidates for the one contested seat out at Big Lake, and they both accepted. So, we're now up to 10 candidates for that event, which is October 15th at 6:00 p.m. Don Wick's agreed to moderate it, so it's all shaping up nicely. We'll be running that in two waves, so we'll have a candidate pool of four to get rolling, and then the second wave will be all the city candidates. Same format as last year, which of course is different from our League of Women Voters friends. So, anyway, look for that in your utility buildings, we've got an insert, as well as a bill message, it's on our website. We'll get it out onto social media as well as we get a little bit closer. On the Northern State, John covered most of this. We had a meeting today, one of our quarterly meetings, that's run by DES, so in this room, it's the large group meeting that's facilitated, includes the Director of DES and all the other state agencies, as well as the local partners. Your role's about to get a little bit more active. That is, I anticipate that as early as the next meeting, or the second meeting of October, I think I'll have an interlocal on your table for action. That will be our second amended interlocal between the county, the port, and the city. Now, this will include a joint funding of the design phase for Fruitdale Road. And what we're, our conceptual plan at this point is to create a single project that would go from SR9- go from SR9 at North End to McGargle Road at the South End. It would include the county road improvements from SR9 to city limits, and then from city limits to Northern State's entrance. It would repair, relocate, and rebuild that road into an arterial. At the Northern State entrance, we would install a roundabout intersection that would address the Fruitdale-Northern State entrance intersection, make that safer, and give it an appropriate entrance appearance. And then from that point to McGargle Road, we would install sidewalks on both sides. So Mark's estimated the design phase cost to be $290,000. I think the, the city, the port, and the county are likely to contribute $180,000. In our case, we'll be using $30,000 of our special impact fee funds to address the sidewalk portion of the project, and then $30,000 of Mark and David's time to project manage this thing. The county and the port will be using dollars. And then the remaining $110,000, anticipated those dollars would come for the second, well, the final third of the design phase would come from the, the major tenant that's likely to locate up there. And it's really, it's a good deal for all parties. It continues the partnership, but our objective is actually to get a consultant selection process kicked off in October with a selection in the end of November-ish. So that way, Mark can get the design running in earnest, you know, December. So our target date of August to have a fully designed, right-of-way certified environmental clearance all done, so he can go out and make a TIB application for next year. And the total project's, what, about 3 million-ish? So.
Does that include the design money? Or that's in addition to?
Well, that's the whole project, right, 3 million? Yeah. So that's the whole thing. And then our, you know, our TIB match then becomes the partners' design funds, some of the right-of-way from the state, if we can count it. And then we've got some dollars, so we'll pay for a construction phase of the sidewalk portion. And, you know, that, that really would solve it all. So you'd have arterial linkage from 9 to 20, sidewalks for pedestrians, and the road would be rebuilt. We wouldn't be wasting money today to repair a road that we would like to relocate and rebuild anyway. And then, of course, for our private developer partner, you know, they would normally be required to build the entrance feature, for example, at their expense, under this scenario. By paying for the design, that would make that part of our overall project, which would be grant-eligible, and may very well allow them to get a facility built for, you know, a third of the cost of their dollars than would be normal. So I think it's worth positive, and expect to bring that back to you. The Planned Action Ordinance is currently tentatively scheduled to come to your table either at the end of November, which is always a tricky week, because Thanksgiving moves the council meeting, or to the December work session. And so we're kind of leaning towards the December work session, bring it to you there. And then look for a second reading and possible action at the first December regular meeting. We've got a couple other ordinances that you're likely to see first readings of at the work session as we move through fall, just because of the way the calendar works. But that's that one. The EIS won't take any further action from you, and the Subarea Plan will be part of the comp plan process. When's that gonna be ready?
Well, it actually can be independent of the comp plan process, I believe, because it's a new section of our comp plan. It doesn't have to be treated as part of the existing.
Not part of the one, the one.
It does not have to be part of the ones a year, so we can.
So that would happen at the same time as the Planned Action.
That would be preferable, it makes sense.
All right. So you'd be, we'd be running those simultaneously. So those are both important. We're also working with the port on one last issue that I don't think we've talked about yet, which is the historic design standards and some of the interior standards for the site. What the port has asked for is the ability to regulate that site themselves. Interior signs, interior parking, interior historic design standards. And I've represented to them that, at least in my opinion, that makes sense, that we don't need the city coming in and telling a sister governmental entity what to do within the site, and that we don't really do historic design. That's just not something the City of Seadrill does. So just as well for them to take that role. It's gonna be a little bit complicated at the front end. You know, if you agree to allow them to take that piece of the regulatory capacity, then they'd like that during this time period where the state owns it. It's a little odd, because the state would potentially have a tenant who would then need to get the design review work done by the port, and with that, then they would come to us to get their permits issued. But our ultimate objective continues to be the same, which is local control of this property, and the port being the one to control it as owner. So I look at that as no different than, you know, a building downtown that has 20 different offices. The owner gets to decide the design of those. The city doesn't really care. We care about the life safety, the significant setback issues, and those sorts of things. So that's something for you to think about if you think the city government wants to be up there telling the port how to redevelop or restore historic structures, then please let me know. That would be a different path than we're currently walking down.
We have, after the DRLAX issue, we've created a lot of heavy screening around industrial sites, and that doesn't seem to be compatible with the open field of Northern State. Are we going to make, I don't know, some sort of amendments to clear that away for that, that property?
It's not an industrially zoned property, and it won't become that, as we're imagining it. It would continue to be publicly zoned, and within that public zone, the range of uses would be available. So it's, it's quite different than an industrial site in that regard.
Okay.
We have been getting closer to a possible path to getting the Winnie Hauser Field developed and in use. If everything lines up, I think you may see within the month that being hydroceded by the youth soccer association. So our vision for that would be a combination of youth soccer, putting in some dollars, city putting in some crew time, the farmer finishing up his last crop, which has already been taken out, and I guess he's gonna have a crew in at the farmer morning tomorrow dawn to go out and get the rest of the cornstalks taken care of, plowed, leveled, and nice. So if we can get that laid out, youth soccer should, that would become their new home as early as next fall, which would be pretty darn exciting. This year, the scope of work would be land leveling, compacting, hydroceding. In the spring, the city crew would come in and put in the parking areas, these would be gravel lots, as well as clean up all the margins where there are blackberries, particularly along the SR20 corridor, so we have some nice sightlines in. And then over time, I think youth soccer would like to have a little storage building, like some of our other youth sports folks have, and, and so on. That site will also accommodate at some point, if we ever think there's demand in that part of town for a small playground, and it would be a great home for some other spring sport. Lacrosse, in particular, comes to mind, because there'd be no conflicts with the fall sport of soccer. Otherwise, it'll be a 10-acre open field, ready to go for frisbees, or just running around, flying your drone, whatever it may be. So look for that to come up. We're not expecting any actual cost in 2015 for our work, and the cost for 2016, we're looking at just a few thousand dollars, because we've already stockpiled the materials, the majority of the materials necessary to build the parking areas. And then the last item I've got's the repeater project, and I really do very much wish that this was not a report item, and that I could just tell you it was working. We've got two current issues. Some of our back-channel frequencies were rejected by our friends up North A. They felt that our frequencies would conflict with their inland marine coast guard operations in Canada. So Mike Voss is working on an amended submission for that. That won't affect the go-live date for the repeater. That's still delayed pending Frontier Communications installation of fiber. And I'm actually, I'm meeting their, their current crew up there tomorrow morning at 8:00 a.m. to let them into the site. They'll be installing facilities inside our building to bring the fiber into it. So they had to stretch about a mile of fiber, and they're getting close to completing that work. Once that's done, then Mike Voss at 911 will be able to do his work, and we'll finally be able to go live. So soon, I expect to be able to tell you that it's on and working, and tell you also the final cost, which of course ended up being pretty significantly more than what we talked about initially for this project. That's all I've got.
Patsy?
Budget work continues with Department 2016 requests due this Friday. The initial budget discussions with the council will be at the next work session, with some general information on the 2015 budget versus actual status and 2016 requests.
Okay, Kevin?
Excuse me. September 12th, we had our third annual skateboard challenge, and I counted the people a few different times, and people coming and going, so my estimate is we probably had around 250 people during the day. Gave away 150 hot dogs, six cases of water, tons and tons of, I mean, they gave away three skateboards, tons of t-shirts and all kinds of things, trophies. The professional skateboard judges have already signed up for September 10th of 2016. They, they proclaimed that this was one of the best events that they do, the community enthusiasm and the attitude of everybody. So it, it went on for, I think, I think I was there for eight hours, and I was never bored, so it's a pretty good event for the kids. And we had raffles, we gave tickets out for t-shirts and all kinds, we gave away probably 100 prizes, and parents and everybody got a ticket, and some adults won raffles, and so everybody, everybody had a good time.
Even you, Kevin?
Oh, yeah, I had a blast.
I had a good time there, too. I wish I could've stayed, I didn't have to work. I got that.
Jermaine?
I just wanted to say, for the, for the forum, somehow I read somewhere that it was the 16th. I know we said the 15th, and then I got a little confused. I'm not sure if it was in this packet or the one before. I can't find it now, but I seen it written somewhere in our, I don't know where, but.
October 15th at 6:00 p.m.
Mm-hmm. Yep. And another thing was, I'm not, I don't think we have another meeting before October 14th. Is that right?
Yeah, we're having a work session. So October, what is that, 7th?
Mm-hmm.
And we'll be having the budget conversation. There'll also be a first reading and a pretty significant presentation on a revision to our animal title. So we've got a proposed complete rewrite of Title VI of the municipal code.
And so I was gonna say that there's also on the 14th, which is our next, the day of our next meeting, but in the morning at 11:30, there's a ribbon cutting for the new Hanson Creek Bridge around 11:30, and if you show up a little bit early, you can, they'll show you a walk across the bridge. So that's, and you park at the helmic in that parking lot, the gravel parking lot there. That's it.
Brendan?
Nothing tonight.
You?
Nathan, over on Memorial Park, there's three, three sets for swings. One of them's missing. Are we replacing that?
I've been out and about a lot the last three weeks, and I've been told that, I think, three times now.
But there's a missing swing?
Yeah.
And so what we're trying to do at Memorial Park is really pull the rest of that equipment out, and we've got a draft plan of a new playground that would be installed in the bell-shaped area just south of the community center, bordered by the sidewalks on the east and west, and the war memorial on the south. And then we've got a separate playground that would be targeting younger kids that would live on the north side of the library, within a new, fully fenced area, only accessible through the library, so kind of an extension of the library to give it some new vitality, outdoor reading area and a small playground. Haven't quite figured out if we're gonna be able to fund those projects in 2016, but conceptually, we like to move cars out of the park and move the playground further into the park. Again, a way to take back the park is to put amenities there that will attract the people that we're trying to serve. So the other part of the issue out there that Nathan's dealing with is the slide is not really consistent with current standards.
Right.
Those horses are no longer operable, and I can't remember, did we pull, did you pull out all the swings that didn't have the correct distance?
Yeah, those are gone.
Clarinterias?
Gone. There's only two, two swings right now.
And that wood, the little wood structure, too.
That one went away due to safety issues as well, so. So it's kind of a question of what we put into an area that we don't expect to rebuild.
So the answer would be what?
I would, I would.
New stuff is coming.
I would say wait. We're, we're working on a project that would put in a new playground at Memorial Park, along with the caretaker, and.
And that should happen in '16?
We're hoping.
I'm hesitating only because the, the budget is, at this point, in the gather-all-the-requests phase, and until I get that matched with the available resources, I'm uncomfortable saying those two little playground additions are $70,000. So one of them, the one, the one that I'm talking about, the primary one, is $40,000. And that included the fencing, or not?
Probably a little more.
It didn't include the fencing. So that's surfacing and, and a few features. It included kind of a climbing spiderwebby feature, but, you know, the cost of these things is just extraordinary due to the safety issues and so on.
And when we had the, we were trying to do the master plan for Memorial Park, it seemed like the SROPTIMists were, was definitely interested in contributing to that park. Can we reach out to them again? Was it showing them the plan and telling them what we're doing?
Yeah, so, you know, we talked to the SROPTIMists most recently about the library project, and they expressed some interest. One thing that I don't think I fully appreciated is their, the budget that they have for community projects. I, you know, I, of course, always think of the Rotary, you know, and their community projects are.
Are big.
100 to $400,000 projects. So, you know, the SROPTIMists is more, I think, like a really big contribution might be $5,000, you know? And so, and I didn't, I didn't totally appreciate that until somebody shared with me kind of their budget, and it's just, it's just a magnitude different than what we're used to with the Rotary-type projects. So, you know, when you have a need of 70,000, every bit is helpful, but it is different than saying, hey, Rotary, is this something you'd like to do? And then we kind of get out of the way, and they do that, plus 10 times more, you know?
Thank you.
Rick?
First of all, to city staff who called me and text me and expressed their condolences and thoughts and prayers to my family, we appreciate that. Not to sound conceited, but I think we've lost a great community contributor now, and some hard shoes to fill, but, yeah. I think we'll, we'll get by, and thank all of you for, for your concerns and thoughts and support to all of us. Thank you.
Thanks, Rick. Brett?
Nothing, thanks.
Nathan, I'm glad you're here tonight. Speaking about the fence at Bingham, that gate that opens onto the street doesn't seem to have an automatic closing function or lock, so once somebody opens it, it's opened, and I'm terrified, like Mike was, that someday a kid's just gonna run out there. Is there a way to put a mechanism that makes that swing shut and latch?
Yeah, it's got a mechanism on there, but I think it obviously needs an adjustment, so we'll take a look at it.
Okay, thanks. And the other thing, I want to bring attention to this letter that's in the back of our packet, that is recognizing Laura for some good work. I mean, she's earning her money and making a difference out there, so thanks from us through the chief to her. Makes a big difference.
That's for sure.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
It's adjourned.
Wait, do we get?
Could we have a five-minute executive session to talk about real estate acquisition, and no action would be requested?
Okay. We will go into executive session at, what is it, 8:09 by this clock, and for about five minutes, we'll be back out. You may wait if you like. There'll be no action taken. There'll be no action taken. So do I hit the stop recording? Yes?
We spent a minute, let's say I can get in there in time for the... I was literally mowing my lawn for minutes, hour.
So we're back from executive at 8:22, and I will entertain that motion again to adjourn. Move to adjourn.
Second.
And we will all leave. Thank you.
Hey. So do you think you had higher numbers this year than last year for that thing? You said, you said...